Gracie, are we? We are. All right, I'd like to welcome everybody who came out today to our April tenth, twenty twenty-three regular score, uh, regular Board of Education, uh, meeting. Uh, and how about let's do the call of order?
Mr. Schwerman?
Here.
Dr. Middleton?
Yeah.
Ms. Kawhi?
Yeah.
And Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Di Lorenzo is absent.
And would you please all rise and join me in our pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, can I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda? Second.
Uh, Dr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Schwerman?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
And Mr. Wilson?
Aye. The motion carries. Uh, and recommendations made to approve the meeting minutes of March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular board meeting and work session. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Tiffany?
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
Dr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Schwerman?
Aye.
And Mr. Wilson?
Aye. Next to comments or commendations and public comments.
All right, so we will start, we have several items. Uh, our first item is we want to say thank you to the Smith Elementary students and staff who endured a cold and rainy afternoon to lend a hand to the community cleaning a portion of the Dayton Kettering to Nectar Bike Pathway that runs through Oakwood. Special thanks to Amy Mullins, Erin Nye, Emily Sima, Lisa Henry, Nate Thompson, and Principal Chrissy Elliott for doing that. So there's some pictures there on the screen of them cleaning that up. So nice job. Also, thank you to members of the Oakwood Bold Group for organizing activities and information shared during the National Drug and Alcohol Fact Week, which was March twentieth through the twenty-fourth. Students took part in a number of activities during advisory period that week. And facts were also shared on social media and throughout the junior high school. So thank you to those bold student members. And then a huge thank you to the Oakwood Fine Arts Boosters and all of the amazing Oakwood Schools' performing and fine arts teachers for their work to make the annual Young at Art held March eighteenth as a huge success. Student work and performances were on display, providing a wonderful opportunity to see many of our talented students. Nice job there. And then our final is we have Madeline Azelli, who will be presenting the Oakwood, and I think some other members, if you want to share, everybody that is here, sorry. Um, we're presenting the Oakwood Inclusion Coalition Annual Report to the Oakwood Board of Education. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Allison. First of all, thank you to you for continuing in your interim role by providing the great liaison link between the Oakwood Inclusion Coalition and the Oakwood Schools uh, as one of the three foundational institutions. That linkage has been so important. Uh, thanks also in, uh, in, not in absence, in preemptory, I guess, uh, to Dr. Gupta, who, uh, was so kind to join us at the annual meeting last week. He came all the way in for the, uh, evening meeting at seven o'clock at, uh, Wright Library. That was very, very kind of him to do that. Thank you, uh, to the school board, um, specifically for including the Oakwood Inclusion Coalition in your gauntlet process, along with all of the other important stakeholders and community partners of the Oakwood Schools. We are on behalf of the Oakwood Inclusion Coalition Leadership Team. We're so very much looking forward to working with Dr. Gupta as he comes on board. It's my pleasure to introduce Leanne Fulford and Dan Turbin, two of our leadership team members. And I will give you now our, uh, annual report as is required by our, um, organizing documents. So Tracy, thank you very much for helping with, uh, getting the presentation ready. If you advance the slide, that'd be great. So these are the subheadings of the annual report, and I shared, uh, with Tracy the, um, PDF of the document as well as the chronology. So you'll have copies of that as well. Let's go ahead to item number one, administrative. We'll advance. Um, just to point out that, uh, the Oakwood Inclusion Coalition has, uh, been refining some of the language in our, um, uh, organizing documents to make it clear that the role of the liaisons is purely that, that the OIC is truly a citizen-led organization. Um, we have enjoyed some new leadership team members, including, uh, of course, Mike Miller, who is on the school board, um, which is a great connection as well. And then, of course, everything, including meeting minutes, are all posted on the OIC website, which is listed at the bottom of the slide there. Next slide, please. In addition, the OIC has been involved in participating with regional events, and that is to demonstrate to the greater region that citizens of Oakwood are, um, supportive of, uh, broader regions' efforts to build community. And, uh, Oakwood wants to be right in the middle, in the mix with that community building, as well as, of course, participating in OIC events and traditions. Um, there is a, one of my favorite pictures because I'm standing with my friend Dan Turbin at the Oakwood Family Pride Picnic last year. Next slide, please. In addition, uh, the OIC worked with the city on developing some signage that is, um, that is installed at the RTA bus stops along the Far Hills Avenue corridor where the Oakwood Farmers Market is during the summer months when the farmers market is active. These were signs that were designed by the OIC. They were approved by the city. The OIC produced them, paid for them, and have gifted them to the city, and now they will continue to be set up. And again, the purpose of those signs, uh, and they're in, in three languages, Mandarin, Spanish, and now I can't remember the third one, English. Uh, the, the language is most often spoken by non-native English speakers who are, who are, uh, new residents to the area. Um, but, but they're an obvious demonstration of the welcoming nature of our community, particularly at the farmers market. In addition, we have, um, uh, in great partnership with the Wright Library, presented some specific programs, one actually related to the signage, which is the, um, the efforts to resettle refugees, particularly in our area. That included a panel of representatives from five or six different organizations, including a representative from, uh, US Senator Rob Portman's office. Um, Senator Portman had been very active in, uh, in this issue as well. Um, as well as a, uh, a series of maps that were created by Sinclair students, actually, um, who were guided by one of our OIC leadership team members, recently retired, uh, Professor of Geography and, uh, GIS, and that's Jackie Household. And these were looking at the continued effects of, uh, redlining. How has inequity continued to play out, um, throughout the decades following the redlining of the nineteen thirties? Next slide, please. Um. Now that said, in all transparency, one of the really fulfilling aspects of being involved with the OIC leadership team is that our group represents probably every end of the spectrum of perspective in our community. And where that has been fulfilling is that even though we don't all agree on the exact path forward, we stick together. We work it out. And that is truly at the heart of the intentions of our organization. We know our community is diverse in its viewpoints, in its perspectives, in its experiences, and that's part of being inclusive and welcoming and open to diversity. And so I love my friends and my colleagues on the leadership team for your commitment, for our collective commitment to this. And thank you for, uh, continuing to serve in this capacity. Next slide. Finally, um, down to the seventeen cents, we've got money in the bank. Uh, we did open a fund with the Dayton Foundation, which was, uh, very helpful in setting this up so that we could accept online giving. And you can see where those, where those funds are held. Actually, our, our largest expense this year was those signs that were gifted to the city to welcome folks to the, uh, Oakwood Farmers Market. But we are looking forward to some programming this coming year and, uh, anticipate that we'll be using some of these funds for that. Next slide. Finally, let me, uh, just again, express our collective, uh, appreciation for the support of the schools, the support of the city, the support of the Wright Library, and, and actually the support of the Oakwood Register, which has really, uh, been very generous in, um, covering, oh, uh, OIC events and publishing OIC letters to the editor. And, uh, as we know, that's where we get our news, right? So thanks to all of those institutions. All right, let me wrap up with just a few, um, uh, thoughts looking ahead. We, at our inner meeting last week, we broke out into three groups that looked at these three categories of programs for, uh, the coming year. And, um, cultural explor- explorations, a film series in particular, is one area uh, that is being headed by, uh, Roger Crump and Dan, you're helping, uh, to co-share that effort as well. Roger spoke with Dr. Gupta and expressed a desire to involve the schools. Um, this could be a multi-generational, multicultural kind of a film series exploration. Roger's also already talked with the Neon Movies about partnering on, um, uh, the showing of so, of some of these films. So I just plant that seed. We're going to explore that, uh, with Dr. Gupta as he comes on board. And, uh, and what we're looking for is truly inclusive activities, not just for certain age groups or just for certain people with certain abilities, right? We want as many of these activities to involve as many different ages and, and, and perspectives and backgrounds as we possibly can. That's part of working together and learning together and, and building a stronger community. Next slide. Uh, and let me leave you on this last, uh, the next event of the OIC is actually coming up in, gosh, it's really long. It's only a few weeks away. May is only a few weeks away. Um, but it is a book read, and, uh, this is a book specifically focused on Juneteenth. Again, a partnership with the, with the Wright Library. So thank you again for your support and, um, your collaboration. And I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Is the title of the book, has the title of the book been determined yet?
On Juneteenth. On Juneteenth. On Juneteenth is the title.
Oh, that's the title of the book. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. And with that, should I, Leanne, you want to?
Yes.
Leanne has something to share.
Well, I just wanted to say, I have spoken to you guys before about suicide prevention and, uh, all of that we're doing in our community with the OIC and the, uh, DEI efforts and stuff are greatly appreciated. Um, I have spent this week in three meetings and suicide rates are going up, as you know, especially in some communities. Uh, but it doesn't mean that Oakwood is immune to this or any community. So thank you so much for, uh, uh, being a representative of the OIC and supporting our efforts. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for all the work that you do. It's fantastic. Very exciting the things that are going on in the community.
Yes.
All workers. Any questions or comments or any additions or addition? Okay. Thank you very much. And we are.
Ready for the curriculum showcase?
Yes.
All right, so curriculum showcase and Dr. Lane, uh, who usually, um, coordinates the curriculum showcase. She is at Ohio State University for our college connection, where we go and meet with professors. So, uh, she's up there with Dr. Waller and Kelly Owens and some teachers. Uh, and so they're up there and then they meet with recent graduates and professors. So I will introduce our curriculum showcase. Um, so thanks to a partnership with the Oakwood Schools Foundation and the Oakwood Alumni Association, juniors were able to participate in a day-long experience aimed at strengthening connections between students and providing a look into their future. The day included motivational speakers, information on finance, and legal aspects of being an adult, and team-building activities. Oakwood High School Science Teacher Heidi Edwards leads the team that has developed this now annual event.
We have experience in, uh, the finding of the needs where we, not only where they are, but where those ones go. By putting an alumni, by having channels that students get in and everyone should try to, to prevent different necessities, uh, self-defense or, I mean, focusing in and service and house service, but I mean, just money, but providing a product to come to the community for all the goals and providing that going around to.
So we, uh, but.
We figured out that, but that students need to go to more positive interaction and up in the base. So this year we brought in a national speaker, um, and the students are engaged throughout the experience throughout the morning, teaching them leaders, so, so, like, communication cells, um, focusing on who they are and who they themselves, and then seeing what they have. All of those things, sort of learning all of the lessons that we have, whether interacting instead of just, you know, it's a fun issue. And along the idea of our learning and how to, et cetera, and I think it's all really responding to that. So we just learn how we can do that through work and our action with the students. That's where we listen, um, sometimes, um, setting the new leadership roles. So it's growing, but we're learning, bringing how, helping them to keep up.
So that is a great experience. If you ever get a chance to observe it of the team building and just, um, even having them talk about what it means now that you're going to be eighteen and you're going to be, uh, going on to college and, uh, those spaces. So really great experience. All right, so we would like to move items ten A and ten B up on our agenda for recommendation. Um, so we have two, I'll say, visitors with us, visitors for now, about to be future employees with us. Um, so we have Whitney Rivard, who will be our Harmon Art Teacher, and Lindsay Callahan. So we're gonna, uh, take their items now so then we can let them go and they can get on with their, their evening. So, um, so let me get to ten A. All right, so item ten A, recommendation is made to employ Whitney Rivard as art, art teacher at Harmon School for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, pending completion and verification of required documents. Ms. Rivard earned a BA in technical writing and a minor in fine arts from Indiana University. She also earned a Master of Arts in philanthropic studies from IU PUI Lilly Family School of Philanthropy. So we have a recommendation for that.
Motion for ten A and ten B?
No, just ten A right now.
Oh, I'm sorry, ten A.
Right.
I'll second. All the roll.
Dr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Schwerman?
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
And Mr. Wilson?
Aye, the motion is carried.
All right, so welcome, Whitney. You are, we're super excited. Um, give you a little background, yeah? Give you a little background on Whitney, so recently moved within the last year to Brookville with her husband and son. Uh, but she teaches in Indiana, because it's not too far there from the border. So we are super excited to have her. And so there with you, Whitney.
Thank you all for being here and thank you for, um, approving my recommendation. Uh, thank you to Allison and Sarah. It's been really wonderful getting to know the Harmon community. And if I wasn't already convinced that this was going to be a great fit, just hearing from the OIC and seeing the curriculum, I just, this is an amazing place to really be a part of, and I'm very excited. So thank you, and I look forward to starting in August.
Yeah, welcome. Welcome.
And you'll be driving from Brookville?
Um, actually, in a strange turn of events, we'll be moving into the Dayton area before July, so.
All right, and then item ten B now. We'll do, uh, recommendation is made to employ Lindsey Callahan as school psychologist for twenty-two, starting the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, pending completion and verification of required documents. Ms. Callahan earned a BA in school psychology from Miami University, and she also earned an educational specialist degree in school psychology from Ball State in person. So we can have a recommendation for that higher.
Motion for ten B.
I moved. Second.
All the roll.
Dr. Middleton?
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi?
Mr. Schwerman?
Aye.
And Mr. Wilson?
Aye, the motion carries.
All right, and Lindsey just got back from vacation. So, um, so she's, she might still be a little bit on vacation. But she's been out there with her husband and three kids?
Two kids.
Two kids? Um, out there, and then they live near the, the Loveland area, and she's coming from Wilmington, uh, City Schools.
Yes, yeah, I've been to Wilmington City Schools for a long time, and I'm, but I'm happy to be here in a great supportive community and, um, reciprocal relationship with the schools and the community. So I'm really looking forward to that and all that Oakwood has to bring. So I appreciate, um, you offering employment to me. Thank you.
Absolutely. Welcome aboard.
Yeah.
All right.
Happy. So if the two of you want to take and you can leave and then head home, then we will continue with the, the rest of our business. Yeah. Congratulations. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Very excited to have you.
All right, we're moving on to. Oh, uh, yes, uh, do we have any board reports? I have just one, okay, an update on the techno- district's technology plan. Uh, earlier this evening, uh, Mr. wrote. I always, I always mess that up. I got it right this time. Um, presented the board, uh, in our work session with the, uh, Oakwood Technology Blueprint. Um, we're appreciative of the committee's work and, and his work in that. And, uh, I look forward to the implementation of some of those items on, on the, uh, Technology Blueprint. Uh, and I really like how there's a vision for multiple years into the future and an understanding that with technology, things are changing very rapidly. So it's very, it's open, um, but yet supportive enough of our students and the work that they do to help them, uh, move forward. So looking forward to seeing that available, uh, to the public and, um, as part of the technology website, too. Very good. Any other reports? Very good. Moving on to item five, budget and finance.
Okay. Um, item A is a recommendation, uh, to approve, uh, an increase to the owner's contingency in the GMP for the Arts Edition Project with Danish in the amount of sixty-seven thousand dollars and twenty-six, sixty-seven thousand, twenty-six dollars. My apologies. Uh, there was, I'll just give you a very high level. This is, um, the net of a change order that, uh, modifies the district control system or the, the, the control systems at the big building, the junior high and high school. And so as we're doing the arts enhancement, it made sense for us, um, to make some modifications to the controls to the entire building. This is the net result of those changes, and we feel like this sets us up to be on a better system, uh, district-wide.
Good. All right, can I get a motion for item five A?
So moved.
I'll second. Tiffany?
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
Mr. Schwerman?
Aye.
Dr. Middleton?
Aye.
And Mr. Wilson?
Aye, the motion carries.
Item B is a recommendation to approve the purchase of acoustical treatments for the Arts Edition Project from Weyer Corp-, excuse me, Weyer Corporation in the amount of one hundred thirty-four thousand, eight hundred forty-four dollars and eighteen cents. All items, um, were, will be purchased through consortium pricing, which, that means we don't have to get those items out. This is, um, essentially to make sure that we have acoustical treatments on the walls so that when we do occupy the spaces, um, as a part of the, um, Arts Enhancement Project, we are, we are able to do so in an acoustically sound environment.
All right, important for, for me, yes. And if anyone had been in those rooms that are too small and way, oh my gosh, it's, it's crazy. All right, can I get a motion for five B?
I moved. Second.
Tiffany?
Dr. Middleton?
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
Mr. Schwerman?
Aye.
And Mr. Wilson?
Aye, the motion carries.
Item C is the monthly reports. You have that in your packet. I will, I will call attention to the fact that this was changed. There was a calculation typo, um, that it's the same report except one cell, um, for the total revenue. Um, so I just want to let you know that. Uh, we are tracking, um, if you look at the report, it would appear that we're tracking under collections. Um, that's virtue of timing. In fact, our property tax settlement came in, um, this week, and we are going to be over collections for what we had projected. So if you look now, you'll, you'll be a little bit concerned that we're under on property tax, uh, on property tax collections. Uh, we are going to end the fiscal year about three hundred thousand dollars better than planned. Um, and I think that that's pretty typical across the county of what, what other county jurisdictions are experiencing.
All right, thank you. Uh, any unfinished business by the board? All right, new business by the board?
Recommendation, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Recommendation.
Okay, good. All right, uh, we have a recommendation for seven A, which is the approval of the Classified Manual for the twenty-three, twenty-four and the twenty-four, twenty-five contract years as presented. Can I get a motion? But was there any comment on it? All right, can we get a motion? For seven A?
Okay, so moved.
I'll second. Tiffany?
Any questions on that before we take, okay. Uh, Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
Mr. Schwerman?
Aye.
Dr. Middleton?
Aye.
And Mr. Wilson?
Aye. Uh, item seven B, recommendation for the approval of the Certified Support Compensation for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four and the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five contract years as presented. Can I get a motion? So moved.
Second.
Tiffany?
Mr. Schwerman?
Aye.
Dr. Middleton?
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
And Mr. Wilson?
Aye, the motion carries. And let me just say, uh, just a, a deep amount of appreciation to you, Tiffany. Um, the Shared Resource Center and to our staff here, our, uh, team that did a tremendous amount of work, um, putting all of this together, the transition was, um, uh, it, it's a huge undertaking and it is much appreciated. So your expertise is, uh, and the expertise of the team is incredibly appreciated. All right, moving on to eight administrative reports and superintendent recommendations.
And I would second that with Tiffany and her team at S R C. They've been great. Um, all right, so recommendation is item eight-one. Their recommendation is made to approve the Oakwood High School and the Oakwood Junior High Program of Studies as presented at the January ninth, two thousand twenty-three board meeting. If you remember, um, this was left off of the February, so this is a second reading for this program of study. So if we can have a recommendation for item eight A.
Motion for eight A.
So moved.
Tiffany?
Dr. Middleton?
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
Mr. Schwerman?
Aye.
And Mr. Wilson?
Aye, the motion carries.
So then our next two agenda items, eight B and eight C, uh, maybe is presented for review are the Oakwood Junior High and Oakwood High School proposed fees for the upcoming school year. Plans are to request approval at the May eighth, two thousand twenty-three board meeting. And then item eight C, presented for review are the Oakwood Junior High and Oakwood High School Student Handbooks. And plans are to request approval at the May eighth, two thousand twenty-three, um, board meeting. So those are info only. Um, and then item eight D, um, which is an information-only item is recommend, uh, is the field trip information for the Oakwood High School Academic Decathlon to Frisco, Texas, to participate in the USA D National Competition on April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three. Um, so go, so good luck to them. And then please note, students and families are reminded that field trips can be affected by changes in the level of alert for national security. And then participation will follow all current CDC guidelines and those guidelines provided by the High Department of Health. So wishing them luck on their, um, their travels and then their competition, April twenty-sixth. So we'll continue on to I, um, item nine. We will, um, take items nine A and ten C through I. Um, if we can have approval for those, and most of those are supplementals, um, and supplemental resignations for coaches and those pieces.
Can we get a motion for nine A and ten C through I, please?
So moved. Second.
Tiffany?
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
Dr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Schwerman?
Aye.
And Mr. Wilson?
Aye, the motion carries. And that takes us. Aye, the motion carries. And that takes us to uh, moving uh into executive session. Recommendation is made to enter into executive session for the specific purpose of considering discipline and or compensation of new public employees or official, official and matters required to be kept confidential by federal law, federal rules, or state statutes by division. Can I get a motion to enter into executive session? So moved.
I am.
Tiffany?
Mister Schwerman.
Aye.
Doctor Middleton.
Aye.
Miss Kawai.
Aye.
And Mister Wilson.
Aye, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for attending our meet-public meeting today. We're going to be moving into executive session and do not plan to take any action after that. Thank you so much. Have a great evening.